Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Monday, February 28th, 2022 regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Before we begin tonight, could you please silence your phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we will begin with our call to order. Mr. Hatfield.
All right. Thank you, President McFarland. Roll call. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rousch.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lauterbach.
Yep.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Frazee.
He is absent.
All right. All accounted for, except for Patrick. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will move into our consent agenda, beginning with item 2.1. We have approval of minutes from January 10th, 2022 organizational and regular meetings. Item 2.2 is the approval of minutes from January 19, 2022 special meeting. Moving on, item 2.3 is the approval of minutes from January 19, 2022 closed session. Item 2.4 is a list of staff who have announced their resignation, as well as the effective dates. Item 2.5 is the approval of the school system bills for the months of December 2021, as listed in the check registers, in the amount of $10,322,381. That amount is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And item 2.6 is the approval of legal bills in the amount of $2,190 from January 31st, 2022.
Move adoption of the consent agenda. Support?
Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Rousch. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda items? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 3.1, Shining Stars. Mike?
Yes. So our first shining star is two of them tonight. It's from our grounds department, Mark Burns and Chris Kisser. Are they here tonight? Come on up, guys. Get the uncomfortable alone, but standing here where I read all about you. So we're kind of doing joint here. Mark joined the MPS team in 2019 as a groundskeeper. Mark is currently on the grounds night crew. In 2017, Chris began his employment with MPS as a sub-bus driver, and then in the transportation department. In 2018, he moved to the groundskeeper and is currently on the grounds day crew. Mark and Chris were actually nominated for the shiny star back in August by an MPS colleague. And at that time, due to a variety of circumstances, they were the last two in the grounds department left standing during a very busy time. I think they'll recall that. The new school year was upon us, and Mark and Chris carried the load admirably, taking care of the grounds of all 12-plus MPS buildings. Their nominator said, "This week, under unusual circumstances, Mark and Chris performed way above and beyond what is expected. I truly appreciate it. We ask a lot of our grounds department throughout the hot, humid, dusty days of summer and the cold, snowy, and icy days of winter, from mowing and trimming during the spring, summer, and fall, to snow removal of the parking lots and the service drives across the 12-plus MPS buildings in the winter, to be in the district's hauling crew for boxes, furniture, musical instruments, to and from central auditorium during concert seasons, and moving the entire administrative center team and furniture out and back in during the renovations this past spring and summer. Thank you, Mark and Chris, for the outstanding job you do every day." Thanks, guys.
And you get a bag each.
Thank you, guys. You get a shirt, cord, and a tie. Thank you, guys.
Come on around, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And our next shining star is Melinda Coyle. Melinda would come up. Somewhere. I saw you earlier, so I knew you were here somewhere. So let me read a little bit about Melinda. Melinda joined the MPS team in 2004 as a math and English teacher at Central Middle School. In 2007, Melinda moved to Northeast Middle School, where she has taught math, science, and language arts. Melinda earned her Bachelor's of Arts, Master of Arts degree in elementary and middle school education from Saginaw Valley State University. Melinda was nominated for her shiny star by an MPS student who commented, "She takes care of her classroom, and she enforces rules to keep us all safe." Melinda was also nominated for her shiny star by an MPS colleague. Among their comments were the following: "Melinda is one of the hardest-working teachers I have ever met. She's thoughtful, considerate, and wears all of the different hats that teaching entails with grace and humor. The enthusiasm and patience that she shows her students is unparalleled. She works every day to make math fun and engaging, which, as most of us know, is very difficult to do. She is always willing to offer extra help to all the students before school, during lunch, and after school. Melinda is a very open-minded and always willing to try new things." Congratulations, Melinda.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations again to all of our shining stars. That'll move us into item 3.2, our second presentation tonight. This is the MPS Early Middle College Program. Dr. Poole, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you.
I was able to get my speech up here a little bit earlier. So thank you very much for inviting me to speak this evening to the Board of Education. This has been a journey since Mike asked me to look into this in July for middle public schools, early middle college. I spent many emails and phone conversations and Google meets with both Delta College and Davenport University. Lindsay Barassa at Delta College and Bill Gagliardi at Davenport University have been great to work through all of the issues, and we had a lot of them. And I'm sure that both of them would tell you, I was asking a lot of questions to make sure that every point was covered. We were able to apply for the middle public schools, early middle college. The due date was February 3rd. We have memorandums of understanding with both Delta College and Davenport University to start this fall, when approved by the state. We will know by March 18th. That is the date that the state has told us. Too far. I would like to acknowledge Mr. Bill Gagliardi, Executive Campus Director for the Great Lakes Bay Campus of Davenport University. He's in the back. And also Dr. Riva Curry, Vice President of Instruction and Learning Services from Delta College. They are both here tonight to show their support for the program. The early middle college is a five-year high school program. I said that correct? It's a five-year high school program. At the end of those five years, students will need to achieve an associate's degree or have up to 62 credits that they can transfer to a four-year college. Davenport has numerous associates. The three that I've listed there are the cyber defense, which is probably the most popular one. Our counselors were able to get a tour of the last PD of Davenport University. Is that correct? I know I've been there a couple times in the last week and going again tomorrow for Ready, Set, Get Hired, but I know that the cyber defense, and I'm sure Bill would appreciate me saying this, has 100% placement. You will 100% of the time get a job if you have that associate's degree right now. So I think that's pretty impressive, and I wanted to make sure I said that live, to make sure that everybody hears that. But also, they have the applied science and network technology and the computer information systems for associates. Delta has a lot of associate's degrees, so I didn't want to list them all. If you're interested in an associate's degree, I would highly recommend going to the Delta College website, and you could choose from quite a few of them. The one I think that will be most popular, and that's just my opinion, I don't have any research behind this, but is the transfer credit. So if you wanted to, you could set up basically to do those 62 credits that would transfer to a four-year school. Most of them, as you know, are going to be general classes that you would take your first two years of college anyway. I love telling my son that I took an oceanography class. I do not know anything about waves or anything like that, and I don't remember much from the class. I enjoyed it, but it was one of those general university program classes that I had to take so many things of my first couple of years of college. So a lot of those would be those 62 credits that would be able to transfer to a four-year university or college. The classes, I know board in your packet, and it might have been sent to you digitally, it would show, and I'm just going to hold this up, and I know it's not big enough for everybody to see, but this is the Delta agreement, and then the Davenport had one for cybersecurity that I'm just holding as examples here. What this shows is exactly how the classes would be set up. Their junior year, their third year of high school, they would have four classes with middle public schools. They would have two classes with Delta or Davenport. Their fourth year of high school, or their 12th grade year, they would have three classes at middle public schools, and they would have three classes at Delta or Davenport. And then their fifth year, that bonus year, would be full-time at either Davenport or Applications. Applications for the early middle college next fall will be available after the state, hopefully, says that we can do the early middle college program. You will have, our current 10th graders will be the first cohort. You'll have to have a three-point GPA, two teacher recommendations, great attendance, impeccable behavior, and a commitment to the program. So in other words, we want to know what your plan is. And I think that parents would definitely want to know what their student's plan is going in, because it's going to depend on what 62 credits they take. My son's currently doing a two-and-two with Delta and Northwood, two years at Delta College and then two at Northwood. He has a program that's already made for him. He knows what classes he has to take at Delta that will transfer to Northwood to get the degree. So if you know that ahead of time, or if you're like me and you were going to be an engineer, and all of a sudden you were a social studies teacher, it might change, but at the same point in time, that would be a plan that you would have going in when it comes to the classes that you would take. So this would be different per child, so it could change by student. Nothing's going to be the same for every student when it comes to this, unless, of course, you're getting an associate's degree in one of those areas. Students who are part of the early middle college will be able to walk with their senior class. So in other words, after their fourth year, they will be able to walk at commencement with that group of students. We've talked about it. They're going to probably go to the reunions with that class. They will not receive their diploma until after their fifth year is completed, and they have something that I know the board knows they need to vote on, which is a math-related course that fifth year. So that is very specific in the early middle college application that the board, you know, agrees to that as well. So you will not get your diploma until after that fifth year, but you will be able to walk with your class that you've been with since kindergarten. Ooh, man, this is quick. Or I have really fat fingers. That could be a two. Cost. Very minimal cost, if any. We are, and Mr. Bruton can speak to this a little bit more, I'm sure I'm putting you right on the spot, sorry, Brian. We are limited on how much we can pay for each class when it comes to dual enrollment. And I even wrote that down, and it's like $6.85 if a student has six classes. So there shouldn't be much cost to parents. And I'm putting this on there because there may be cost. It all depends on the books. A lot of us have gone to college where you know some books might be $30, and you have one class where it's a $300 book. I remember that. So it all depends on how much the books cost. MPS will cover, that's a lot of money, when we're taking a three-credit class at Delta College or at Davenport University. That's an awful lot of money. Books would have to be over $100 in order for there to be a cost out of pocket for the parents. So the reason I put this slide up there is because that's okay if I'm the parent, because when I look at how much it costs to go to Grand Valley, or CMU, or Michigan State, the three that I put up there, even if it's $100 a semester, that's three semesters, that's $600, I would take $600 compared to $50,000 any day of the week. So even if there is a slight out-of-pocket expense, it is worth it in the long run, because you're getting two years of college. If you're doing that transfer thing, or if you're getting the associate's degree, you're done with college with, maybe for $600, if there's those expenses. Doesn't mean they're going to happen. It all depends on books, which nobody in this room has any control over how much the books are. The professors are the ones that set the books. That was, the big cost one, I think, is a lot of the questions that people have, and I want to make sure that I do say that there could be costs to it, but I think that they will be minimal. Most of them will be paid for by MPS. And what questions do you have?
I have a question, Dr. Poole.
Yep.
Is there a limitation as to how many students can enroll in the program?
There is not.
That's great.
Nope. There is not. After, you'll appreciate this, Mr. Bruton, after the podcast, I already have an email, so some people are listening to the podcast, which is great, that they wanted to do the early middle college already. So parents have already listened to the podcast about early middle college and have said, "My son will be doing that." I don't know if they've talked to their son, but they did say that their son will be doing that, so. There's no limit on it at all. And I should say that I'm aware of, I don't know based on programs, you know, I'm sure that Davenport may have an issue if there's 50 kids that sign up for cybersecurity and making sure that it's staffed, but we'd love that problem when we get there. I'm sure Bill's shaking his head, yes, too. We would love that problem.
One other question I have, is this a, like a pilot program status, or is this now a permanent thing at MPS?
Once it's approved by the state, so hopefully by March 18th, it should be permanent. It would be something that we can build on. And I know, I was talking earlier with some people, it's like, we have to have that first group to go through to say, "It's okay. There's nothing wrong with it, and, you know, everything went smoothly," or, you know, "There was a cost, but it was only $30 a semester," or whatever it was. I think we need that first group to go through with it before we can see how many students will truly do it. It's a great opportunity for any student. I had somebody ask me, you know, "Who's it really for?" They did the early middle college to begin with, to try to get at first-generation college students. I was a first-generation college student. I think it has expanded to anybody who knows what they want to do or has an idea of wanting to transfer to a four-year school, and right now, it could be anybody that can do that. I would guess it's probably not going to include, and this is just my thought, our probably our top performers are going to go to the University of Michigan, or Stanford, or MIT, or wherever they choose to go to, but this will be a lot of our students, I would guess, probably 80, 85% of them could do this program. If they choose to.
Right. Dr. Poole, can you do this as a student athlete?
It's a great question. So you don't get to redshirt and have a fifth year of eligibility, but absolutely, you could be in sports still, and you could do clubs during those first four years. The fifth year, you wouldn't be able to get an extra year on the football team or anything like that, but for those four years, yes. When I say that, I have not control over the schedule at all, so I have no control over Davenport's schedule or Delta's schedule. We've talked, Lindsay and I talked a long time about what a perfect schedule would look like, and I said, "For that junior year, the perfect schedule would be they have the first four hours at middle public schools, and then they have a Monday-Wednesday class," if you guys can remember what college classes were like, "a Monday-Wednesday class from 12:30 to 3:00, and then a Tuesday-Thursday class from 12:30 to 3:00, and they'd be done before any kind of a sports practice." I don't control that. I can tell you, most, a lot of those schools, Delta and Davenport, have online as well, to where they can take it whenever they want to log in and do it. So that's an option for a lot of the classes, especially at Delta that I'm aware of, only because my son has enrolled there and has taken some online.
But if you had aspirations to be a college athlete, this would not be a path, because you wouldn't have a college, or you wouldn't have a high school diploma when you walk away at 18, right?
After your fifth year, you would absolutely have your diploma.
You'd have that year gap of...
You could have that year gap, yes, but you would not be a high school, you would not be a high school graduate till after the fifth year. So, yeah, you would have a year where you're...
You're committing to the fifth year upfront, Brad.
Right.
And there have been some kids who not have the in-between year, at least in school ball, and then still go off and play.
So after four years, you're going to have everything that you have, you're going to need for graduation. The fifth year is where you're giving the commitment that you're going to be here, to where we say, "Okay, we're going to pay for your school, as long as you know you've got to be here the whole time, and then we'll give you the diploma after that fifth year."
Is it a full schedule during that fifth year?
It's, yeah, it's 15 credits. It's five classes. Yeah, both semesters. So I believe 12 is still full-time in college. It's a little bit above full-time, but 15's definitely doable.
From a funding standpoint, this is dollars that comes from the state of Michigan.
Correct.
Goes through MPS, and we pay the tuition.
So I'm going to say the number's wrong here. I think we're like at $8,800 a student. Is that close?
Right now.
Okay. Right around, yeah. Right now it is, $8,800 a student, if you have to divide that by six, the number of classes. And then if we have to pay out 680 is what we can pay out right now for a three-credit course, which is equal to one hour, there's still money that's coming to MPS, even though we're sending students out. We would see the dividend that fifth year, when we're getting money for kids who aren't here at all, even though we're paying a lot of it out to Davenport or Delta.
And then through, the other question I had was, students that want to go into the trades full-time, is this an opportunity for them to continue to build on their trades education from MPS into the Delta trades program as well, or...
Yeah. Phil, there is a CTE component of the early middle college. We did not apply for that right away, only because we wanted to do, we wanted to get into it first.
Okay.
That could be something that we could absolutely do with the welding program at Delta. We send students there right now. I'm trying to, like, I think they have a building trades as well. So there's opportunities for that to grow. We did not do it for this initial application intentionally, hopefully to get approved, and then making sure that it works smoothly to begin with, before we jump into the trades.
Okay.
Absolutely, we need to have more kids in the trades.
You used the word trades, but career technical education's pretty broad, and I don't know how Delta or Davenport feels about that, but I, cybersecurity, to me, is a career tech area, so.
Yep.
I'd just make a comment, Steve, that I'm familiar with this program and a couple other districts, and it has just been so well-received, and the kids have done fantastic. And so I'm excited when I heard that we were going to do it as well. It just opens up a lot of opportunity for, like I say, a whole broad variety of students.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Okay. Dr. Poole, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is item 3.3. This is advanced learning program for students. And we have Kara Stark and Jen Servos here presenting tonight.
I think they brought a couple helpers, too, Scott, but I won't introduce them, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kara Stark, and I'm the principal at Central Park Elementary. And we have the opportunity to talk to you about the Midland Public School Advanced Learning Program for Students, also known as the ALPS program. So with us tonight, I have Jen Servis, who is our elementary curriculum and instructional specialist. We have Chelsea Sauvay, the assistant principal at Central Park. And then we have Wendy Winters, who is a consultant for the programming for Bright Kids.
Well, you can give her former career, too, if you want. We want to give recognition for that.
Yes, we do have that. Yeah. Lot of experience as well. Okay. So first and foremost, we are going to, this program will take place at Central Park Elementary, so we are extremely excited to have this program there. And we, our hope is that these students that become part of this program are also a Central Park explorer, and they're going to embrace the culture and community that we have in this building, and really give opportunities for those students to collaborate with Central Park students as well, because we really want to look at it as all of them are students of Central Park, even though they're in a different program, but we're all a community. So that just kind of shows some highlights at Central Park.
And we knew showing Nellie would brighten everyone's evening, right? Okay. Our why for programming. MPS continues to seek ways to grow and meet the needs of all of our learners. In alignment with our MPS vision and our district's continuous improvement work, we commit to embracing diversity, creating an inclusive and equitable learning environment, and meeting the individual needs of all, which includes challenging our highest-achieving students. The Advanced Learning Program for Students will begin next school year, 2223, at Central Park Elementary School. There will be one ALPS classroom in each grade, first through fifth. Students from all six elementary buildings will be identified and invited to take part in this program. Next, I would like to introduce to you Wendy Winters. Wendy is a retired MPS teacher. She spent 20 of her 37 years at MPS, teaching in the Elementary Gifted and Talented Program, and has a master's degree from the University of Connecticut in gifted education. Wendy has agreed to partner with us and has been an essential part of this planning process. And she also agreed to continue to work with us next year as a consultant through the implementation phase of programming. She is here to share some research behind our work.
Thank you, Jen. So I would first like to say thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I have really enjoyed coming back to Midland Public Schools in this year, and it thrills me to be able to talk about my love of Bright Kids and education for them. So I'd like to start off to say, when Jen and I first met, we looked at the things that needed to happen, which needed to be part of core curriculum and part of PYP, and it fits so beautifully with PYP, because both programming issues deal with complex and creative thinking, and that just makes it such a beautiful fit. So when looking at research, you know, I left in 1993 from the University of Connecticut with my studies, and I have to tell you, you know, we took a comprehensive test from all of our years, you know, they're, they live in the world of Ivy League, right out there. And so I, you know, had all this research in my head back at that time, and I started, you know, thinking back through and looking back through some of my books, and I discovered that, in fact, there really has not been a lot of research done in the area of gifted ed since the '70s, '80s, and '90s. So most of the new things that you see are folks who stand on the shoulders of the gurus that are listed on that slide, and they may have some new digital versions, virtual versions, books, et cetera, but it's all pretty much basically based on those folks starting. The explosion happened in the '70s and '80s, but I have to say, gifted ed started in, actually, 1925. But I digress, which I do very easily. Nobody's kicking me back there, so I'll come back to our topic. So one of the things that I did right away when Jen and I were working together, not only was looking back at research, but then we talked a lot about, yes, it needed to be like a school within a school, or a self-contained classroom to follow the PYP programming rules. And so that makes a lot of sense, because the kids are in a class with their friends and so on and so forth all day. Up to this point, Midland Public has always done a pull-out program of sorts. And so there are advantages to both programs, but it will be very exciting to explore these advantages, because as a parent said to me once, a long time ago, "My child is gifted all day. Why do you only have them for part of the day?" So this will be a chance to address that, and so that will be great. The other piece that I would like to talk about is social-emotional. I think it's one of the parts, I think we all can agree that, about Bright Kids, and that there are Bright Kids, and we need to do programming for Bright Kids, but I think we forget about the social-emotional piece, that when they sit in that classroom with students who do struggle, or students who need lots of repetition and they don't, or perhaps they go home at the end of the day and haven't learned anything new, those kids feel odd, they feel undervalued, and they don't know that, a lot of them, when they're really little people like this, who we are dealing with, they don't know that. And so, once these kids come together, there is a synergy that is unbelievable and a safe zone for them. So the research is there with Sylvia Rim and social-emotional and different folks, but like I said towards the beginning, when I knew we were doing this, I did call the University of Connecticut, having been there for five years, actually. It becomes a family of folks out there, because it is such a specialized field. And so Dr. Sally Reese and Dr. Joseph Renzulli became Joe and Sally. So I called Joe and Sally. we forget about the social emotional piece, that when they sit in that classroom with students who do struggle, or students who need lots of repetition and they don't, or perhaps they go home at the end of the day and haven't learned anything new, those kids feel odd, they feel undervalued, and they don't know that, a lot of them, when they're really little people like this, who we are dealing with, they don't know that. And so, once these kids come together, there is a synergy that is unbelievable and a safe zone for them. So the research is there with Sylvia Rim and social emotional and different folks, but like I said towards the beginning, when I knew we were doing this, I did call the University of Connecticut, having been there for five years, actually. It becomes a family of folks out there, because it is such a specialized field. And so Dr. Sally Reese and Dr. Joseph Renzulli became Joe and Sally. So I called Joe and Sally and had some conversations with them, and in the meantime, it's very interesting, they created an academy in Hartford called the Renzulli Academy, and it's for elementary students. And so Jen and I were able to actually talk with their principal and discover that we are in similar paths with identification and programming. So I feel good about where we're going, and I thank you for this time. Thank you.
So our timeline and identification, as Wendy noted, Phase One of our process began earlier this month. In addition to the ALPS article in the Midland Daily News, Kara and I had the opportunity to share information about ALPS with the listening community via the MPS podcast. In the first phase of identification for ALPS, the district looked at the top percentile range of a variety of assessment scores. The students who maintained scores in the top percentile range in multiple testing cycles in both math and literacy were those identified in our first selection phase, and emails were sent to families. In addition to in-district students and families, I am currently working with a few out-of-district and homeschool families that have expressed interest in programming. Some families have been able to provide NWEA data from neighboring districts. However, if a family does not have NWEA data, we are closely working with Becky Longstruth here at MPS to preregister students, so that we can host NWEA testing sessions here at Admin. That will be happening within the next few weeks. And finally, in the first phase last Thursday evening, we hosted a parent information meeting at Central Park. We had over 100 parents and family members in attendance, as well as many students. Our information night also included a tour of Central Park. Phase Two of our process is just around the corner, beginning early in March. Students identified in Phase One programming will next take part in OLSAT eight testing. The OLSAT eight is an IQ equivalent test, which measures abstract thinking and reasoning ability. This assessment will be given on-site at Central Park Elementary on a few Saturdays in March, and there will be a few different dates and times, and families will have the opportunity to choose what works best for them. In addition to this assessment, classroom teachers will also provide input on identified students. And finally, the program selection, scores from the assessments noted, the OLSAT eight and teacher input will be used to determine eligibility for the 2223 ALPS program. Parents of students who meet the ALPS admission criteria will receive notification mid-April. So what to expect in ALPS? The PYP transdisciplinary framework will be utilized in ALPS. ALPS teachers will collaborate with the respective grade level team at Central Park, and will utilize six unit of inquiry grade level planners. Teaching and learning will embrace teacher and student agency. There will be an emphasis on higher order thinking skills, conceptual learning, and critical and creative thinking and problem solving. Students will have opportunities to research and explore various interests and passions. ALPS classrooms will utilize the MPS Board of Education curriculum, materials in the areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies. Teachers will work to construct and co-construct relevant and meaningful application and extension opportunities for ALPS students, some of which will include project-based learning. The classroom daily schedule will embrace the transdisciplinary approach with fluidity in and between subject areas throughout the school day, addressing the core grade level Michigan State content standards. Students in ALPS will also continue to receive instruction in the auxiliary areas of world language, art, PE, and music. Staffing for the ALPS program is currently underway. Teachers from across the district do have the option to complete a voluntary transfer request to teach one of the ALPS classes. Also, new hires will be considered for the program. The district has committed to low class sizes for this programming, and finally, we are asking for a one-year commitment from families that opt in to this program. And next up is Chelsea to talk about additional programming options.
Thank you. Some additional opportunities we're exploring to further advance our students is Odyssey of the Mind. So this is a creative problem-solving opportunity for students to come together as a team and present a solution to a problem. Science Olympiad, which complements our science and STEM program currently, so students would compete, again, in groups, and then they would work to problem-solve different areas of science, like earth science, biology, or engineering. Destination Imagination teaches life skills and expanding imaginations through team-based creative problem-solving opportunities. Interest-based clubs, some examples may include chess club, robotics, which we currently do, housed at Central Park Elementary as well. Creative communication poetry contest, which this would emphasize recognition to poets, both young and old. And then project-based learning opportunities, which would provide students a way to actively engage in real-world problems that are personally meaningful to them.
Okay, so when it comes to training opportunities for our staff members and us as a team for Admin at Central Park, we have, the wonderful Wendy Winters is going to give us on-learning professional development, so that will start in the summer and spring when we start the staffing process, and also she will be on board for us next year. In addition to that, we have the Admin Team and Jen and Wendy, and then whoever our staff members are for the classrooms, are going to attend a confitute in Connecticut, and we have the opportunity to be there for a whole week. And this will be an opportunity where teachers will be able to really embrace everything that it will be our program, and design classes and how their lessons will roll, and also tie it to our PYP. So it'll be neat to be there as a whole team and be able to see how we're going to utilize that at Central Park, and that will take place this July. In addition, next year, we will do ongoing professional development and just continue to be able to advance our teachers to support those learners. Transportation, so this is probably one of our hurdles. We do, so when it comes to transportation, there will not be direct transportation between home and the school. So if, if Central Park is not their homeschool, we can't have a bus come here. One thing we are looking at, though, is that if we have a group of students that are in a neighborhood area, where we could possibly get a neighborhood bus to a spot and then transport them, we're looking into that piece. So part of the enrollment process of signing up these students, we are asking if transportation is a need, so that we can then go from there to see if we need to look into those opportunities. So thank you for letting us share. Do you have any questions?
Kara, just one question from me. Can you tell us about the size of the classes you're anticipating or allowing for?
Well, they're, they're probably a little nervous to answer that one, since it kind of falls in my scot, but we're, we're looking for a minimum of 18, and so we would keep that, you know, 20 to 18, somewhere in that range from there. And so, in the first year, if we get a few from Central Park and we get some from the others, and we're at 16, we may look at boosting a couple of the, those betweeners that are already at the building to get to the 18 and let the program have the opportunity to grow. You know, and I want to address the transportation pit a little bit, it's not being this stubborn, but if, you know, one person is coming from a neighborhood, to run a bus direct doesn't work, and so what we're saying is, could there be a shuttle from that bus that doesn't run the neighborhood and drop and catch our other bus, or can the parent get them to that next bus that run, actually runs to Central Park? So we don't have the bus drivers, you don't have transportation, and you don't run routes all over the region for an individual is the problem. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna figure this hurdle out, but it's gonna be a difficult one.
Mike, I'll add, on the transportation topic, at the parent meeting, we had a few parents ask if they could carpool and if we could share information at some point once we have class lists, so I think we'll be able to brainstorm and overcome the barrier of transportation.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
Just a comment, thank you. And you have Wendy Winters over there, who my children had over the years, and thanks, Wendy, for coming back to help. She is just a wealth of information, and I'm excited to see where the program grows.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I still had a couple more questions.
Oh, sorry.
So if a student has a 504 plan, would they also be able to be a part of this program?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. And then, is there a plan for the middle school, for this to continue with them?
Yeah, so we've been exploring that next level, and we are su, our assumption is the same as yours. That, that'll be the next piece. And so, for me, a lot of this push in the beginning, Porch, Jen, and Steve, they've been working on this for a while, because it kind of came from my thoughts, but as an educator, and I was a high school educator, we have lots of tracks for our students to meet their needs, and I felt there was a need still in elementary to do some of that, even though it would be less, it'd be narrower, but we also know that middle, American middle schools don't have that very well either, and so we've been exploring the American middle school model since I've been here, with the IB program, which the European model doesn't quite fit us right. It would probably eliminate some arts, and we don't want to do that. And so I think we're going to look at that next level, and then some of our funders and talents, and if you come up with the right idea, we'll, we'll support that as well. And so, I think you and I were talking earlier, and that's kind of what I was alluding to a little bit.
Okay.
And so I think that's the next level, what we're, what we're looking at, right, Jen?
So because of the demands of these classrooms, let, require a para or a shared para for...
If we keep the number low, I don't believe so. But, you know, your question on 504s and some of that, yes, we are not exclusive, and it could variable there a little bit, if that's the best answer we can give you right now.
Okay. That's it. Anybody else? Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have item 3.4. This is our mid-year benchmark data report. Penny.
Thanks. Good evening. I just want to go on record as saying that team that just presented, and Steve as well, lots and lots of hours behind the scenes invested, exploring and researching and putting this together. Really proud to be part of that team. So yes, onto the goal report. You may remember last school year, Jeff and I were the Dynamic Duo. We brought you monthly reports about our COVID learning plan, and while many of those requirements are no longer in place, the one that remains is the goal report. At the beginning of the year, we were required to set goals at each grade band, elementary, middle, and high school, and these are academic growth goals, and where possible, to use our NWEA benchmark assessment. We did not bring those to you, that was not part of the requirement, but we did upload them into the state system, the GEM system. The next set of requirements is why we're here today, mid-year, to share the progress with you and post those results on our transparency site. And then at the end of the, the year, I'll be back to share the final goal report and to post those on the transparency site. I want to frame your thinking about the data that you're about to see. I want to remind you that this is one point of information that informs the work of teachers at the classroom level, of principals and school teams, as well as district teams, and it's important, especially when we're using NWEA to inform instruction, but we're not making any wholesale decisions across the board based on just this mid-year data. The structure that you'll see for the next set of slides, you'll see the goal slide for elementary and then middle and high school, and then you'll see the data slide following that. The goals are very simple. We wrote them in the most simplistic form to meet the requirement of this legislation, and it is growth. Do students express growth from the fall assessment to the winter assessment to the spring assessment? So for elementary, we have a math goal and a reading goal, and here is the data set for you. I know that might be difficult to see. As you just gander at that, though, I'll let you know, this represents in the far columns the percentage of students, elementary students, who improved on NWEA, and the demographics, the reporting category that you'll see, are elementary students. The percentages in parentheses with each category represent our district average. So I just wanted an opportunity to give you some context in terms of the percent of students that would be for each of those reporting areas. If there is no data, just like last year, the reason is confidentiality. There are less than 10 students in that category, and to, to maintain their anonymity, we don't report out on those. So you'll see as a general rule overall that we're in fair shape for this mid-year point in elementary. Moving on to middle school, the goals are very similar, that students will show growth from fall to winter based on the NWEA MAP growth assessment for both reading and math, and the data report looks similar. Again, all students, we have about 60.8% showing improvement or growth in reading, and 77.7. That is not the slide we are on. Thanks for that, Brian. Brian's whispering to me like it's... Apologies for that. So yes, are all students at the top, and then you can see the, the breakdown. Moving on to high school, I'll draw your attention that there are three goals. There is a reading goal and a math goal related to NWEA MAP growth. That is for grades nine and 10. Those are the only students that use that benchmark assessment. We were required to have something for 11th and 12th grade, and this might be a good point for me to just say, the whole state was sort of scrambling to figure out what that should look like for 11th and 12th graders. Many of us in districts landed on using our SAT data, our PSAT/SAT College Board data. So that is actually data from spring of last year to fall and then winter, and I'll just note to you that the number of seniors who opted to retake the SAT was a smaller population, so it's, it's not quite an apples to apples. Here, though, is the data slide for NWEA, again, ninth and 10th graders, and you'll see, not quite as great as we are in, in middle school or elementary, but I will note that we're still digging into this. It seems that not all of our students had the opportunity to take these assessments, the ninth and 10th graders, so I'm not super confident at this point in saying that this data is solid. I think we need to go back and, and double-check our reports. I can follow up with you all on that. And then to the final data set, which is College Board. Again, these are 11th and 12th graders, the percent who showed improvement from spring of last year to fall of this year. That meets our requirement, and we will be bringing you a similar report at the end of the school year.
Thank you, Penny.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
All right, next up, we have our first action item of the evening. This is expulsion of student A. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Board Subcommittee, including three Board of Education members, McFarland, Hatfield, and Lauderbach, Superintendent Shero and Associate Superintendent Jaster met on January 19th, 2022 regarding student A. Student A is being recommended for expulsion, or it is the committee's recommendation that student A be considered for expulsion and be permanently expelled from Midland Schools. This student was offered off-site services. Parents have stated they will be pursuing other educational opportunities outside of the district and have therefore declined. Action is required. Roll call vote from the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hatfield, please perform the roll call vote.
All right. I have to make a motion.
Uh, wait, yeah, we have two motion, I'm sorry.
I move adoption of action item three, Agenda Item 3.5, expulsion of student A.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Lauderbach, support by Mr. Roush. Any discussion regarding M3.5? Okay, roll call vote, please.
All right, roll call. President McFarland?
Yes.
Vice President Roush?
Yes.
Secretary Hatfield?
Yes.
Treasurer Lauderbach?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Holler in favor.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Next up, this is another action item, ratification of special education mediation agreement. Mr. Shero.
Yes, our legal representative, Robert Dietzel, from Truyn Law, and the Midland Public School Administration is recommending the Board of Education take action tonight to approve the special education mediation agreement that was presented by Truyn.
Accept the motion? I accept the motion. Thank you.
I move that the Board, I move that the Board of Education ratify the special education mediation agreement as presented by the superintendent and recommended by legal counsel. as presented by the superintendent and recommended by legal counsel.
Support. Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Lotterbach. Any further discussion regarding item three point six? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to item four, request to address the board. First up, we have Mr. Greg Roan. Good evening, Mr. Roan. How are you?
Good evening. Good. My name is still Greg Roan. Now we're on the Student Resource Center at Jefferson Middle School and I'm going back to school for my master's of social work. I'm also still the vice president of Paralocal Union 6183, but that may soon be changing too. I'm again not here to badger the board about petty issues, but here to share my thoughts and experience at school. And thankfully, I'm not having to wear a mask today, so my voice won't be muffled. I want to start by thanking you for being flexible with scheduling when times with COVID got tough. I'm hopeful that in the future, we don't have to worry about these shifts to virtual learning. But I fear that this new normal, or if ever there were two words I hated more. It is nice to see less kids getting tested at school and things being on the upswing. Hopefully, we are in the clear on COVID for this school year. Also, I want to thank you for the extra days off and taking care of the people that that work for MPS on those days. That is greatly appreciated by myself and many others in the district. I'm here to ask you to take a hard look at our district and not just scratch the surface of a spreadsheet, but come to the schools and speak to the building administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and support staff to see what we are facing every day. Ask them, are you satisfied with your work environment? Ask them things like, where do you see possibilities for MPS to improve and better support our students today and tomorrow? How can we as a board and administration better support teachers, parapros, and school staff? How can Midland Public Schools better support all the students who attend our schools? These are the things that we have to be concerned about with today, tomorrow, and looking forward. I would again extend the invitation that if any one of you want to join me for a day at school, I would love to have you. I think the best way to get a real feel for how things are going in our organization is to be willing to get your hands a little dirty from time to time. My email address can be found in the school directory, or I'm sure Mr. Sharrow or Megan Feis would be happy to share that with you. The Midland Public Schools that I attended as a student was a leader in the Great Lakes Bay region and the state of Michigan, for that matter, and something I was proud to attend. You didn't mess with Midland Public Schools because they had their act together. I drive by Seibert School on a winter day, almost a week after a snow has fallen and see the sidewalks are not even shoveled for students to go to school. Or our communications to the district seem to make light of the struggle today's parents are facing that no parent living today has had to deal with in the past. I would like to think that we are still that leader based on the work that many dedicated teachers, paraprofessionals, school building administrators, and school support staff put in every day to make this place great. But I can't say that with such certainty anymore that we are. I am working every day to make Midland Public Schools the best place it can be for not only tomorrow's students, but for today's students too. I am only asking for you to take a little extra time to ask some of the people around the district school buildings for their ideas on how to improve our district, as there are employees out there with some really, really innovative ideas on how to tackle some of the problems facing our district today. People who, if empowered to do so, are willing to pitch in and help out. I'm hoping that one day I can fit all my thoughts into three minutes, or that maybe you would give me more time, but today probably isn't that day.
Thank you, Mr. Roan. Mindy Cox.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to bring something up that was brought to my attention this last week from another parent since our last meeting. This mom has a child at one of Midland's middle schools. She called me with a concern about something that happened with her daughter. Her daughter was invited by a staff member at the middle school to attend an after-school club meeting. Her daughter, her daughter was told, quote, "You'd be a perfect fit. Please come. It will be fun and we are having snacks." Her daughter arrived home so excited that she had been invited by a staff member. She felt so special. She was excited that they were going to have snacks and have something fun to do after school. My friend didn't know what club it was, as the middle schools don't send out a list of clubs and meeting times to parents, but decided to let her daughter attend because she was so excited and looking forward to it. So when she went to pick up her daughter Friday after the club meeting, she found out it was the Alphabet Safe Space Club that she had attended. My friend was concerned for several reasons. First, this is an 11-year-old child. What did this staff member mean by telling her daughter she was, quote, "A perfect fit for the club"? Is she a perfect fit because she dresses in baggy clothing because her daughter is insecure about her physical appearance? Is she a perfect fit because the staff member assumed she wanted to know more about this LGBTQ group that she has never shown any interest in? Or is she a perfect fit because she is an easy target for manipulation? Second, this mom has no problem with this particular club, but is age appropriate to be at the middle school level. Are we confusing these easily impressionable minds and bribing them with snacks for a different agenda? Are we introducing material that will only confuse them more and make them feel more insecure at a very sensitive time in their growth and development? Third, this mom has no problem with this club being available for children who want and need that specific support. But this mom definitely had a problem with her child specifically being targeted and recruited by a staff member. My friend met with the administration of this middle school because of her concern and was told that this specific club was only handing out personal invitations to attend. But myself as a mom, myself to middle schooler, I know that there were flyers announcing this club and promoting its after-school activities all over the school. My friend was assured it wouldn't happen again and we would have an email with the list of available clubs and meeting times for parents to know and be made informed. But guess what was on last week's email from the middle school? The specific clubs and the meeting times. This is just another example of how parents have been pushed yet again out of the classroom and out of our schools. And the lack of transparency there really is between the parents and our education system. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Hansen.
Good evening. Thank you for joining.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Hansen. I stand before you, a child of God, daughter of a king. I will not be shamed into silence and I will never apologize for standing up for our kids. My label should be concerned parent, but I'll take litterbox lady if it'll bring attention to what's going on in our schools across this country. When did our public schools stray so far from your primary role? Your responsibility is to teach academics, not ideology. Parents send their kids to school for an education, not to question their gender and not to play pretend. I know you've tried to distance yourself from this furry behavior, but I talk to kids and parents. I know what's happening here and in schools across our great nation. Why is this being allowed? It clearly violates your dress code and your code of conduct. Requiring students to act human is a reasonable standard. So parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles, talk to your kids. And if you don't agree with what's happening in our schools, stand up and stand in the gap for your kids. If we as a society accept this behavior, what's next? This confusing and distracting behavior is detrimental to our kids' focus on education in the classroom. There's risk for psychological damage on both sides. My understanding is that the kids that don't go along with it are the ones that get reprimanded. Just imagine an authority figure such as a teacher or counselor or principal telling our kids to go along with this when our kids can see with their own eyes that it isn't real. It seems to me like mental and emotional abuse. And I'm just guessing, that same authority figure would never have the nerve to bully an adult. Requiring students to act human is a reasonable standard. We keep hearing the experts say, well, I'm here to make it very clear that parents are the experts when it comes to our kids. And your focus should be on academics, not ideology. Last I checked, these are public schools, not government schools, right? Requiring students to act human is a reasonable standard. I don't know why this is being allowed and I don't know who is behind this agenda. But as I learned from the Midland Daily News, everyone is entitled to their opinion. So my opinion is that there must be funds attached. But I'm just a single mom with minimal time to research, so I hope that someone will get to the bottom of this. I've stated at previous board meetings that our leadership has failed us at every level for this to come down to parents and school boards across this country. Why haven't our leaders in Lansing stood up for our kids or our leaders in DC? Personally, I'm disgusted with both sides of the aisle because this has happened on their watch. But I've told my daughter from the start, this is not her fight. She's just a kid. I'm the grown-up. I'm the parent. This is my fight. But our representatives should be leading the way. Where are they? So I'll say it again. Talk to your kids, your grandkids, your nieces and nephews. Find out what's going on in our schools. And if you don't agree, stand up and stand in the gap for our kids because they all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Bonadie's. Good evening, sir. How are you? Thank you for joining us.
Hello, my name is Joe Bonadie's and I'm here to correct the record regarding the fiasco at the January 19th special board meeting. If you go back and review the video of that meeting at the six-minute mark, you will find my wife attempts, my wife's attempt to address the board. One minute into her amen, into her talk, her First Amendment rights were violated by being denied the right to inform the board of the behavior of some of its members right in this meeting room. After that meeting, she was again interrupted at the two-minute mark by informing the board of a dramatic change in its behavior by not reading or approving the study group minutes from the January 10th meeting. There was blustery denial and several claims by Mr. Sharrow that the minutes were read and approved. If you look at the January 10th Agenda Subcommittee Meeting, items 11, 12, and 13 go directly to four action. And if you look at the video, the minutes in dispute are clearly absent. And the draft minutes for the meeting of January 10th available on the 20th did not have those meeting minutes in them either. Five calls to action from these committees, of course, required no decisions to be made to show up at that meeting. When a citizen sent a letter to Mr. Sharrow on January 20th calling out his abuse of my wife, he said my wife was, quote, or has, quote, lied and shared false information multiple times, unquote, and claimed, quote, "Correcting her was needed to set the record straight," unquote. For the record, I have the citizen's permission to share this communication. I will not beat a dead horse regarding the not reading and approving the three Subcommittee Minutes again. Mr. Sharrow's multiple verbal claims, on the contrary, at the meeting were the lies. Mr. Sharrow also brought up the oath issue again in that email. I can provide video timestamps of the multiple phases. Basically, grant claims were made in October that he took an oath to protect the students. He provided a CRT-laden generic boilerplate document marginally related to the issue at hand, which had nothing to do with his specific role. It did, however, say he was supposed to uphold the Constitution, however. Finally, last December, Mr. Hatfield, thank you, had morning coffee with my wife and I. He mentioned that he found my wife's emails confusing and asked if I had proofread her messages before sending them in. Well, I will note that all of you were copied on Mr. Sharrow's messages calling my wife a liar from that January 20th meeting. If you go to the, it's in your inbox. I guess you're all okay with that behavior by your employee. Thank you.
So Mr. McFarland, I'm going to interrupt here. I'm going to interrupt and Phil, please step in too. So again, misinformed again. The meeting minutes were not, I did not say they weren't read. The meeting now, there.
Mr. McFarland?
This is not on the agenda.
This is, this is our meeting of the board. There was no FFO meeting, hence why there was no non-man, so the pattern wasn't changed. I took an oath in office, as all educators do, and it was provided to her. But Mrs. Bonavita still didn't apologize when she got up and lied that I didn't take an oath off office. Multiple lies, multiple times. I'll stand by my stance, just like tonight, misinformed again and misinformation. That's all I'm doing is correcting information. Done with the misinformation. I will not be slandered. Get your information correct.
Furthermore, guys, look at the calendar. We met as a board in December. We had no study committees between our December meeting and our January 10th meeting. How are we going to read it, read minutes from a meeting that we didn't have?
How did the bylaws change without a meeting?
The bylaws were, the bylaws were approved in the meeting. I didn't interrupt public comments. It just went for three minutes, guys. All right. We didn't meet, nobody met between the December meeting and the January 10th meeting. There are no minutes read because we didn't meet.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Buchek. Do you guys remember what it was like to be in sixth grade, when you were in sixth grade? Man, I remember sixth grade and it was awful. It was awkward. My body was changing. New hormones, uncomfortable feelings, trying to imagine, trying to manage a cracking voice, pimples, body odor, while keeping my self-esteem in check. Looking back on it, my feelings were simply just undeveloped, as all kids are at that age. In sixth grade, there's probably no other time in a life where children in general are more susceptible to grooming and manipulation. New school, new friends, new opinions, new changes, and that was without COVID. I've never seen such activism to abuse children as we are seeing in our schools today, apparently accelerated during COVID. For many kids at this age, it won't take much for them to rebel against their own parents, perhaps buddy up with an abusive active ally. And yes, their politics are abusive when you're in the sixth grade. We've had a chance to talk to a lot of teachers and parents recently. Parents who pulled their kids from the school system. One top issue is the environment our schools are putting our children in. This social experiment brought in by radicals are shielded because they claim no hate. Hate is a feeling. It is an imaginary construct of violence based on somebody else having an opinion they don't agree with. And based on my opinion, it is to protect them while they deteriorate the social fabric of what makes Midland great. It is a fact that there is a self-proclaimed Alphabet Safe Space Love Club at one MPS middle school at least. When I was in sixth grade, I didn't know what love was outside of my family and it took a long time to figure it out for myself. It's a complicated thing and should be developed over time. Some sixth graders attend this club and do not tell their parents about it. The flyer has a transgender flag promoting it. Children are offered cupcakes and treats to attend. Is it appropriate for a sixth grader? I'm not going to decide that answer for the school system. However, I have six things I would like investigated. Does the adult leader of this group have privileged information regarding students' emotional condition prior to these meetings? Does the adult leader pull children aside to encourage them to attend this group? Are children encouraged not to tell their parents about staying after school for this group? Why isn't this group's poster on the student club poster webpage with the rest of them? Are sixth graders reprimanded for calling other sixth grader by their boy name when they now now go by something else? The color blue, for example. Are children being bullied more in MPS schools because students think they are gay, but they refuse to identify as such? Does the board think it's appropriate for government middle schools to be focusing on adult fetishes, especially without parents' consent? Regardless if this is a student organized club, what does the sixth grader know about transgender or even love shared outside of their family? I already have the answers to these six questions I asked earlier. I need you guys to find out and act.
Thank you. Bernita Bonadie's.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bernita Bonadie's. I must follow up to that January 19th special meeting where only three of us were present while I spoke. I was stopped from speaking by the president and I quote, "This is not the form to personally attack the board members. If you have something to say, that's fine, but I will not allow you to attack everybody personally." Per your own bylaws on public speaking, the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant session when they make comments that are repetitive, obscene, and are comments that constitute a true threat. My comments didn't fall in any of those categories. Thus, I should not have been interrupted once, much less twice. As elected officials on this board, I am indeed allowed to address concerns I have. Where else can I let others know what is happening? I don't have the ability to send out a communique to the district. The fact that my comments about my personal interactions with a few of the school board members was labeled as an attack is in some ways quite comical. John Lotterbach sat there smiling in agreement while I was saying these things. He didn't seem to view it as an attack. However, just a day later, on January 20th, there was a communique that was sent out to the district about the litterboxes. It was put on Sharrow's and MPS's Twitter feeds, also on the Midland City Police Scanner page on Facebook. Not sure if it was implying there was something criminal that had been done or why it was there. Just to show, these are the graphics. This is just what happened to that little communique as it went worldwide. That was viewed over three million times and that's just the ones I can track. This is also a view of the 59-plus websites that have. This is also a view of the fifty-nine-plus websites that have shared that information. So, for an individual to be able to stand up here and make a comment, I would like to ask, why do you go to such lengths to protect elected officials, as you all are, while condoning the smearing of a parent? Why wasn't that stopped? Did you not know that that communique was going out? Is this truly the level of integrity and conduct you expect from Mr. Sharo as the superintendent of this school district? It is your responsibility as elected officials representing all of us to hold him accountable to the oath he took to his job description. And if you're not willing to hold him accountable, then you need to step down and let people that will hold him accountable step in. The lack of openness and transparency of this board in your handling of interactions with the community is a disgrace. I continue to pray for each of you and your choices to do the right things.
Thank you. Kurt Bohis.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening. All right, so my name's Kurt Bohis. I'm a Midland resident with this child enrolled in the elementary school within the district. I've learned anything from engaging with these, uh, within these board meetings over the past six months is that this community is full of parents who are willing to take time out of their day to do what they think is right for their children. I've also learned that despite our common goal, there is much disagreement about what specifically is best for our children. In particular, when it comes to COVID nineteen, some have felt that COVID restrictions were beneficial on the whole. Others felt that COVID restrictions only worsen the situation. Regardless of what was true in the past, a lot has changed with this pandemic over the last six months, so much so that I believe we have a real opportunity to put many of our disagreements behind us and become more aligned on a path forward for our children. So what has changed? Due to many factors, the risks associated with COVID nineteen continues to fall, primarily due to the fact that both natural and vaccine immunity is growing. In addition, more and more experts now believe that COVID nineteen will become endemic. Globally, many countries are lifting restrictions. This is good news. It's good news because the real risks of COVID are declining. This, in turn, renders many of the restrictions less advantageous. Moreover, as the risks of COVID decline, the cost of COVID restrictions continue to rise. There are several studies now linking COVID restrictions to lower overall happiness, psychological damage, developmental issues, reduced learning, and smaller social circles. With the declining risk of COVID nineteen, the rising risks of restrict, and the rising risks of restrictions, there are growing opportunities for both sides to align. To me, the path forward is now clear. We must return to normal. No more canceled proms, no more restricted events, no more contact tracing, no more quarantines, no more mask mandates, no more encouragement of limited social interaction, no more virtual learning. Let's get parents back in the classrooms. Let's focus on building relationships with new people. Let's teach our children to ignore minor risks and instead focus on meeting new people, learning, and living their lives to the fullest. Let's celebrate the minor role that COVID will play in our lives moving forward and work together to shift our kids' attention from the pandemic to their own academics and social development. Thank you.
Last we have tonight is Will Zabaki. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the time to speak. I just, there's a few topics I have that I wanted to go through. One was the ALPS program. My daughter actually was identified as one of the students that was eligible to participate in the ALPS program. So, the one concern that I wanted to share with regard to that, my co-parent and I often disagree, as you've heard at previous meetings, including the vaccination of my children. But in this case, we both agree that our child will not be participating in the ALPS program, even though she has been identified as eligible to. And the specific reason for that, that concerns me, is that there is an advantage to Central Park Elementary over other schools. And I don't know if it's justification of the use of the building or somehow trying to justify the spending of the money on it, but there are opportunities that are being offered at that school that are not being offered at other schools. And I think that that is something that the district should consider looking at. And even, maybe it's too late. Maybe you can't do that. But maybe you can at least be aware for future considerations for programs like this where they're restricted to only one school. Our daughter doesn't want to be removed from her K through five friends, K through four friends, to start a new program at Central Elementary, Central Park Elementary. The second issue that I wanted to talk about has already been touched on, but I think it warrants, uh, more attention, which is, there is a difference in middle school. I understand there was sexual safety, okay? Safe sex, uh, education, teaching you how, as kids who are experimenting, who may not tell your parents, what's, what is safe and what isn't safe. But what is happening in the schools now is not sex safety, it's sex, uh, leading, sexual leading. It's indoctrinating children, and it is not, it's not acceptable. I, I should be the one that is having these conversations with my children, not having them go to these clubs in private and having these conversations before I've even made the decision to even have the talk with them about sex. And so, there's, there's definitely an issue that needs to be looked into there with respect to the, the clubs that promote sexuality in any form. There's a difference between education and indoctrination, and so that's, that's something that has to happen. The third thing, um, just COVID testing or, and, and the COVID restrictions, we see in the stats, children very rarely experience issues from it. But what we did see in the presentation earlier is that kids suffer detrimentally due to remote learning. So I hope that when this board is considering future remote learning, that they consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that will close our request. Oh. That's good. You may have come in late, no problem.
My name is Jennifer Ringold. Um, I am a parent of three students here in the district, and after comments made tonight, um, I would like to also share with the board that I am a faith educator and a sexuality educator. And after things that have been said this evening, I just wanted to point out that through a community connection, my organization, along with three others, have been hosting parents and caregivers as sexuality educator classes. Those have been offered virtually for anyone to sign up for and participate in, as well as acting in right now, standing up and standing in the gap for our trans students, our LGBTQ students, and making sure that they know that they are seen and heard in this space, as well as our teachers and staff members in the district to identify as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are closed with requests to address the board and moving on to item five, Curriculum Destruction Assessment. Item five point one, we have minutes from Ms. Baker.
We do. These minutes are from January thirty-first, and we met here at the Administration Center. Our first discussion was on the Elementary Specialized Program. Jen Service and Kara Stark presented an overview of the advance, new advanced learning program for students, ALPS, which will begin in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and be housed at Central Park Elementary. There will be one section at each grade level, grades one to five. Students will be identified for the program based on academic data and teacher input. The program will utilize the IBPYP framework, and teachers will receive additional professional learning specific to teaching advanced learners. Next, we discuss the early college. MPS is submitting an application to the Michigan Department of Ed to start an early middle college program in fall twenty-twenty, or twenty-twenty-two. Delta College and Davenport University have agreed to partner. Students choosing the program will commit to a five-year high school experience and will earn a high school diploma along with an associate's degree, an industry certification, or sixty transferable credits from Davenport and sixty-two from Delta. Next, diversity, equity, and inclusion update. MPS continues to implement actions aligned with a vision and plan, following our examples of projects that have been launched or in the final planning stages. Culture and climate leaders, the All Are Welcome Book and Colors of the World Crans Project, human library for middle high, Midland High seniors, and professional learning for administrators in partnership with the Department, Michigan Department of Civil Rights. And lastly, elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund update, which is called ESR. Penny provided a high-level summary of the ESR plan. The plan prioritizes academic and social emotional support for students through additional staffing and programs. The Northeast Middle School HVAC project is also included. All components of the plan adhere to the federal and state requirements, and input was gathered from local stakeholders. A more formal presentation will be made to the Board of Education in early spring.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have an action item five point two. Penny, do you want to tell us about it?
I do, although you already heard about that tonight. So this is a follow-up from Steve's presentation about our early middle college. And the piece that requires your action is approval of the student five-year course of program, the course program of study. Those were the two documents that are in your board packet, and he held them up for you to see. So those are both for Davenport and for Delta College.
Okay, thank you. I will accept the motion for item five point two.
I move that we accept item five point two, adoption of the, uh, early college program. Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Lotterbach. Any additional discussion for item five point two?
So we're going to approve this, but we don't hear if it's been formally approved by the state until the eighteenth, but we're doing it ahead of time so that we can hit the ground running when that is approved by the state?
And it's required as well.
It's required to have us.
To be considered on it.
All right.
Yes, it is a requirement of the application. We submitted it indicating that we were bringing it to you at tonight's board meeting, and then we have to follow up with, uh, with the outcome of that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, Finance Facilities and Operations, item six point one, we have minutes from Mr. Lotterbach.
Thank you. Committee met on February seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Item one was the East Lawn Property RFP meetings. The developer interviews were reviewed. The committee will seek additional information over the course of the next month and discuss again at the March FFO committee meeting. A recommendation of the full Board of Education is anticipated to occur in March. December financials were reviewed. Variances in year-to-year cash receipts were attributable to the timing of tax revenues received from the city of Midland. No other significant variances were of note. Purchase card and purchase orders above the bid threshold were discussed. Construction bids, uh, were, uh, were discussed for the upcoming, for tonight's meeting. Administration will present shortly two bid packages for consideration, the first being bid package twenty-two dash two oh four for district, district-wide renovations at Midland High School and Herit Henry High School auxiliary gym floors, Herit Henry Dow High School track, Jefferson Pool infill, Sofits, Jefferson Middle School flooring. Also bid package twenty-two dash two oh six, Northeast Middle School first floor HVAC, uh, and that will be a prevailing wage job due to the use of ESR funds for the project. Next meeting will be March seventh, five P M.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up is item six point two. This is information, this is a letter of intent, East Lawn Property.
It's me, uh, and again, it's just for information, uh, no action required. Our FFO committee, as John just read, had met, uh, and we reviewed the three RFPs we received on the redevelopment of that property, along with the city planner, Grant Marshall, and, um, the Sharon Morton from the Community Foundation. And then we did a second round where we met with River Caddis, who, um, at this point in time, we are informing you that we'd like to, to propose a letter of interest, an LOI. And we had attorney work with us on the LOI. In response to that, we gave River Caddis a draft, and they're very, uh, have no issues with that at all. That's probably an update even for the FFO, when he's responded, no issues at all. So, um, we'll move forward with the letter of interest. It's just a letter of interest that continues to process, which is probably a Goodyear process before we would ever actually, um, get to the point where we would submit to you, um, to approve a sale to them.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike. Uh, next up, item six point three is our, is an action item. This is district-wide renovations. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, sir. And per the minutes from Mr. Lotterbach, we are recommending this evening the approval of bid package twenty-two two oh four, which is a part of our Series Two bond funds and also could use capital improvement funds as well, depending on how the contingencies come in. This package is comprehensive and includes resurfacing of the Midland High and Dow High auxiliary gym floors, resurfacing of the Dow High track, Jefferson Pool infill, infill, and also flooring replacements at Jefferson's and Sofit replacements across the district. We are recommending this evening that the General Trades Award goes to Wobeg Construction for eight hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The Wood Athletic Floor Refinishes goes to Floor Care Concepts for forty-eight thousand and eight hundred dollars. Other flooring to Elite Coatings for one hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, and the track resurfacing to Star Track Enterprise for one hundred and two thousand. The grand total for bid pack twenty-two two oh four is one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, and we are recommending approval of this award this evening.
Okay, thank you. I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the bid package twenty-two two oh four as item six point three.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mrs. Baker. Any further discussion regarding items listed in item six point three?
The track surface, I know we had an issue at one facility of having to do that twice. Is this the same group?
It is the same group, but, um, they were very good on it, you know? So you would understand that in business, and so they did a great job. We resurfaced it. We had some graffiti right after they resurfaced, they came out and cleaned that for free. So, um, I think they responded appropriately on that. Our track consultant, so French uses a consultant in that area, still recommends Star Track. Not many options in that area, but they still recommend them.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, item six point, six point four, Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, sir. We also bring to you tonight bid package twenty-two two oh six, and this includes the installation of new HVAC equipment on the first floor of Northeast Middle School. If this project is approved, it will use ESR three funds. We are recommending this evening that the award for General Trades goes to Wobeg Construction for twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Mechanical goes to William E. Walter for six hundred and eighty-seven thousand and seventy-one dollars. The electrical to Ted's Electric Service for one hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, um, making the grand total for this award package eight hundred and forty-eight thousand and eight dollars.
All right, thank you, Brian. I will accept the motion.
I move adoption of item six point four, uh, the construction bids for, uh, Northeast HVAC. Support.
Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding item six point four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Uh, now, next action item six point five, this is a paving bid.
Yes, sir, thank you again. Uh, we are recommending this evening that we award a paving project that includes the HH Dow High bandlot and also the Jefferson Middle School receiving and athletic staff parking area, which for those familiar with that is the area that's in between Jefferson and Seaburg. After bids, we are recommending that that award goes to Pyramid Paving and Contracting of Bay City for three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And if approved this evening, district capital improvement funds will be utilized for this purchase.
Okay, thank you.
Move adoption of six point five, the paving bid at, uh, Jefferson. And, and the HH Dow lots as well.
Support. Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Roush. Any additional discussion regarding item six point five? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have item six point six, another action item, gifts totaling ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, sir. And because of the size of these gifts, they do require your action. The first is support from Dow Chemical for the finances related to the equity audit, support from Mr. Craig for the Dow High Baseball Program, and support from Woodcrest Elementary PTO for some furniture purchases desired by staff over there. And we would appreciate your action this evening, allowing us to accept those gifts on behalf of MPS.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the gifts totaling $99,100 in item six point six.
Support. Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding item six point six?
Do we have all of the sports accounts on our books now? So they're fully into our accounting systems and tra-tracing and everything now?
That's a, that's a complex answer, Phil. The sports boosters themselves run their own accounts.
Okay.
That are not associated with the school. They run their, their own 501(c)(3) status. We also have internally general funds that support the athletics at both sides of schools. And there's also what we call club accounts as well, where different athletics have different accounts that they'll put money into that's fundraised. So there's multiple streams of revenues that support the athletics. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
So the question was, the club counts did come out of revenue.
Okay. So is this one going through the club account or the middle, middle one?
This was to be, this was to go to their club account.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Any additional discussion?
I'd like to thank the Dow Chemical Company for supporting Midland Public Schools on multiple fronts, especially for our audit.
And our other donors listed here as well.
Yes.
Very, very generous, and we can never say thank you enough. All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, information only, Mr. Bruton?
Thank you, sir. We are acknowledging 15 gifts totaling $10,880.83 on our agenda and in the credits. This includes a wide range of items, including robotics support, donations to help the drama clubs, and several donations to Midland Public Schools in honor of Lawrence Thompson. And I will leave that memoriam to Mr. Jaster, he'll speak next, to highlight a little bit about Mr. Thompson and why we are receiving honorariums on his behalf.
Okay.
So that's in item seven, Scott, so keep going.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're moving on to Human Resources, and this is item seven point one, Study Committee Minutes. Mr. Roush?
Yes, so we met on February 10th in the admin building. Items on the agenda included reviewing teacher retirement notices received by the February 1st deadline. Item number two was staffing overview for the 202223 school year. Teacher vacancies were discussed, along with the timeline for the Advanced Learning Center Program at Central Park Elementary. Item number three was discussion, we discussed the recruitment strategy for new teachers, upcoming career fairs and DEI initiatives. College career fairs continue to be hosted virtually, and MPS will be attending several upcoming college virtual career fairs. And then finally, discussed FOIA. Several records requests for employee communications were received over the past four weeks. The FOIA process was reviewed, and recent requests were discussed. Next meeting will be held at a future date, which will be posted.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item seven point two, Information. Mr. Jaster?
Thank you. As Mr. Bruton just mentioned, there was a passing of a former employee, so that's what I'll be sharing with you, the board and MPS staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mr. Lawrence Thompson, passed away in January 17th, 2022. He was a chemistry teacher at HH Dow High School and retired from the district with 35 years of service.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item eight, this is Correspondence to and from the Board. Eight point one is Information Only, Letters From the Board of Education to the recipients listed on the agenda. Eight point two, again, is Information Only, that's letters to the Board of Education from the people and entities listed on the agenda. Item nine is Scheduled Activities, again, Information Only. This is essentially just a list of our remaining Board of Education meetings for 2022. Those can all be found on the agenda. Item 10 is a Study Discussion Session. At this point, is there anything that needs clarification that we've discussed so far this evening? Otherwise, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Sherrill. Okay. Mike, the floor is yours. Or Brad, did you have something? Sorry.
In your address, could you give us an update on the Dow turf and lighting scoreboard, whatever, what's going on out there?
I might let Brian do that. He may be a little more schooled on me, if you don't mind, on that one, Brad.
Yes, sir. Lights are up, and scoreboard is ahead of what was the predicted timeline. Brad, I don't have a specific date of completion, but we were, we were hoping to beat the worst-case scenario, which was an April-May timeline, and it looks like we're going to have it up in time for spring sports.
Fantastic.
Yep.
That's great.
Yeah, we were told. I guess they didn't know that. Sorry about that, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Yep. I'll just talk a little bit about Truen Policy Service. So for quite a while, I think even former members who sat on Administrative Services had talked about Truen was getting into policy service and Niola and its cumbersome process, and Lynn knows it better, or actually, Scott Inland, I learned, were the original members who began to review Niola when Carl brought it in at that time. And so it's very cumbersome, and the updates are very cumbersome, and their policy manual is huge. And so through many years of districts' requests, Truen decided to get into the business. And there seemed to be some sense that Truen, the largest school law firm that defends most of the districts, who often saw weaknesses in your policies, when they would protect, represent you in civil action, decided to get into that. And so John, with his legal background, I know he expressed interest in that, and Scott had as well. And so we decided to see how Truen's policy services worked. I think they're in year two, it's gone very well. I, you know, I gave you some numbers. It's about half the manual, the, of the reading of the Niola manual on that process, same cost, basically, in the same ballpark as Niola when you go forward. So we will continue to work on that policy behind the scene, and then we'll convert probably in the summer. But of course, we want to make sure all those policies align with our practices, or we need to adjust our practices to the policies. And then we'll have the Administrative Services review that whole package, bring it to the full board somewhere in the summer, and then from there forward, we'll be following the Truen policy manuals, the Niola, if that makes sense. The other piece that I want to talk about was, you heard a little bit on staffing and the retirement. So our process in MPS for a long time has been moved up for staffing to notify by February 1st for a small stipend that allows us to get out, post our jobs, and begin hiring before many districts even have gotten into that process. And so this year, it, it was about average. We have 18 teachers and 25 total employees who've applied for retirement, and we were already posted. We are interviewing this week, and so we begin to hire that hiring process. As you know, the teacher shortage through our country is large, in particularly certain areas. And so the sooner we get out there, the better quality candidate we're going to find, not just fill the positions later on, so.
How, how strong is the candidate pool so far?
Yeah, Kyle's reporting pretty good return, particularly in elementary. We do very well in elementary still. Some of your specialty areas of special education or a CT program are difficult. We did have approximately five math retirements, so that'll be a challenge, although we probably, the staffing will probably, as we go through our staff process, it may, it may end up being four next year. That needs to be replaced, but mathing may, math may be a little bit of a challenge, John.
Okay.
And that's actually all I have for you.
Okay. How did we do in filling? Did we fill all of the permanent substitute teachers or permanent, I don't know what their classification was, but?
Quite a few of them. I can't remember how many we said we were going to do, but we did very well on it.
I'd have to check with Kyle to get those final numbers.
Yeah.
We actually ended up hiring a lot of them as full-time in other positions as well too, so it kind of ebbs and flows and changes daily, Brad.
Got it.
Just like we thought. Gives us a pool, and then when we lose somebody, we pull them in, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Support. Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Roush. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We stand adjourned.